Hey, is that my cue?
Uh, maybe give me just a second.
Okay.
I'll be something else I need.
A live screen or being recorded.
So you think about zoom or not zoom?
I oversee it as the meeting is being recorded, use your controller to respond.
Oh, there is a way to add something to do to add a. YouTube.
So we.
We're good. Let's just go.
Just go. Okay. We need to do something up here.
Okay, they wanted to be told everything.
It should be good. All right, technical team in order here. All right, here you hear you. 503 will call the September September 2024 meeting of Albany County Planning, zoning commission. Start with a roll call. Ms. Hanning.
Here.
Platt, here. David is out teaching Hinckley here. So we got four out of five. That's a quarter. Uh, first item of business is to improve the agenda. Anybody have you? additions, deletions, corrections? Been moved to prove there are seconds.
A second.
Move of motion second discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion approved. Okay, first item of business, the July 10 meetings. We didn't have those quite ready to go last time. Mentioned up. I had a couple of small things, um, but let's start the down table. There was Platte. You got anything? I don't have anything. Down there. Okay, Ms. Hanning's looking like she's.
I get one really super light or.
Scroll.
Okay, it's lines 120. Or actually 122. We just need to change the word last to this.
To just delete that word?
Or turn it into list because we all were talking about the list, the list.
Okay.
That's all. Thanks.
Okay, you bet. Uh, okay, I just, uh, the minutes are always kind of struggle. Who are we writing them for? It can't be complete, but it. It is our permanent record. Mr. Erskine has to digest these back. Uh, line 64 was the first spot. I thought we could. Add some clarification. Says he does not want to annex the property. We assume he means he does not want to annex to the city. I just thought that would be clearer.
What number was that? It's nine.
Line 64?
60.
I can just just add a couple of words of what are we talking about there? I would think just adding into the city would would make it clear. Who's annexing the what for what reasons? Then, uh. I guess the. And like me, Mr. Gerch, what is the? When we make a recommendation or either approval or denial goes up to the board. Do they understand what happened through the minutes? Do they get the minutes at the same time? Or do they have to rely on your staff reporter? How do they know what what our discussion?
Um, for what? For anything?
Yeah.
Typically, we put a, um, some information in our staff reports, um, that discusses your discussion or just kind of captures the main points. They do receive the minutes as well.
Okay. Again, this is one that kind of caught my eye. It wasn't three, two vote. I'm down at line 95. Commissioner Van David, Chairman Hinckley were the deciding votes. And I've had some of the commissioners. They'll call me sometimes like, well, they'll just see the vote. They'll say, well, what was the problem? So I guess my concern was just how we communicate our. Particularly when there is dissent, how do we communicate that? If 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 these are the right place to put it, then in this particular case, I think that statement kind of. Exfer to, well, what was the problem? So what do you? Should that go in the minutes or just in your staff report or thoughts on that?
Um. I mean, I try to put in the staff report just so, I mean, they have it there in front of them when they're making decision. I mean, because the five minutes are provided to them in a different. We just send the clerk hits the minutes, um, and they.
We don't get the minutes to your meeting. In our package for the county commissioner fees, we get a synopsis of what was the issue of anything that was raised, what the vote was, as David had said in his, uh. You know, in in what is being reported to us. There is something there.
Okay.
And as you have said, I have called you to find out how this going.
Yeah, something or some elaboration on that. Okay, well, that's I guess satisfied. I mean, in fact, these minutes aren't even a minutes until after this meeting. Is that right?
Right.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, so it would be.
Water is long on the bridge. All right. Then I have offered just a few small corrections on line 98 for purposes of the long term. Uh, then it's Albany County zoning resolution, new zoning districts. Useful to add the word residential between new and zone, just so somebody could understand what what kinds of districts we're talking about. Just this was strictly about the residential.
Which, uh, where are we at here?
Line 98.
I apologize. I'm trying to figure out how to make the YouTube thing work on this, but and I've sent some emails and stuff.
Oh, okay.
So that's why.
Your multi task. It's, uh, yes.
Good residential is only districts.
Good luck with that. And. Line 151. Statement today, the city should be represented. I think the sense of this was that I would defer to Commissioner Platt. I would add the words at the county meetings. That was your intention. I think said that. Okay, so I would just add those three, four words at line 151.
Sorry, what about the three words?
At count at county meetings. At the county meetings, the same. And I think that that actual that sense was carried on through to the board meeting turned out. Okay, that's all I got. Anybody else wish to approve as amended? I moved to approve as in July 10. Oh, man, it says amended. Second. Further discussions. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, same sign. Okay, let us move on to the. August 14 minutes, uh. Let's just open this up. Anybody got any corrections, additions? Misspellings, sing out. Anybody? All right. I'll start line 51. Just there being no public comments. With me.
51?
Okay, but line 51.
Am I changing?
I just, there being no further public comments. It's a kind of a, it's a typo and there's a couple. I think there's other places where that came in, but we did have public comments, so the minutes should not reflect that there were no public comments. Uh, line 73. We know when you're there.
I'm there.
Okay, so at the end, there's their comments. That should be the.
I'm there.
A possessive there rather than a positional there. And then again, at 85, I would add no further public comments.
Okay.
Added 100, same issue, new residential zoning districts.
What number? Sorry.
Line 100.
Okay.
And that's all I had to just kind of clean these up for posterity. I'm sure posterity will be grateful. Anybody else got anything?
I did, yeah. Line 138. Talking about the railroad noise. Um, it says information needed in order to decide what kind of setback requirements could be adopted. I think we were just talking about mitigation measures, not just setbacks. Obviously, a lot of houses there already. So we should mention sound barrier walls, things like that. So. So if we could say what kind of mitigation measures could be adopted.
I just add a little setback requirements or mitigation measures.
Yeah.
Something like that. The else? Okay, motion to approve as amended. I move to approve the August 14 minutes as amended. Is there a second? Further discussions. Any favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Propose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, conflicts of interest. Mrs. Hanning, anything to share with us?
Nothing to disclose.
Mr. Platt.
Nothing to do.
Scott Carter. Same for Chair, and we'll move on to public applications. Just a quick overview of how this works. We'll review a report from the staff. We'll, uh, take out comments from the applicant. Hope they'll stand for questions if they care to. Then we'll have a formal, uh, public comment period. If you do want to make a comment, we'll ask you to state some to the podium, state your name and address. Stay on topic. Try to combine yourself to three minutes or so. Then we'll close the public hearing. With a motion and then move on to disposition of the application by the commission. The first application for us this evening is Albany County School District Conditional Use Application CU 0224. This was deferred from our last meeting and we are open to a staff report. Mr. Gerch.
Yes, Mr. Chair, commissioners. Um, Albany County School District number one is applying for a conditional use permit to allow the use of the school to be operated on properties of agricultural. Um, this, the proposed use will be, um, on a piece of of ranch land. It's up in a part of the county off of Esterbrook Road. Um, it's a couple of miles from the Betterman Esterbrook intersection. If anybody knows where that is. The actual address is 19 Slow and Easy Ranch Road. Um, the school will function within a building that is currently permitted as a residence. Um, the school will serve rural families in Albany County, North Albany County. And the staff recommends approval of this applications. So you have any questions for me?
Questions for Mr. Gerch? Plus, I mean. Ted.
Sure. Well, thanks, Mr. Mr. Chair, Mr. Gerch. Just following up on Karen Bowman, your GIS analyst, her questions about property ownership, building ownership. Does the district buy this parcel? Or does it remain in private? Private ownership? And is the is the building already existing or does it need to be placed there?
Um. Maybe some of these questions are good for the applicant. Since I'm not sure, I know that they purchased building. I don't know if it's on the property yet or not. I know it's been permitted. And yeah, they they should get answers to these questions.
Okay.
The the fact that in your staff report, they had questions about ownership, you know what those questions were? The the GIS analyst had to read your staff report at this point.
Um, let me look.
Your second bullet under reviews received.
Um, so I will. Let you know that Joe was working on this project and he's out of town, so he has a little more information on this than I do, but I will check to see.
There wasn't a statement or attached that it saw.
There was not.
Attached to her.
I didn't see the answer to her.
Well, question, Mr. Harris, looks like you have.
I think ultimately Tom or GIS coordinator is interested in making sure that her records are correct as far as ownership. Um, there wasn't a transfer which possibly they missed, um, for planning and zoning purposes. It's not pertinent. Sprint Cars been made it very clear that ownership of parcels is not something that zoning can regulate. So.
Okay, I guess my my question pertains to. If if we were to condition the conditional approval to address the game and fish comments about sage grouse habitat, would that fall to the district or would that fall to the property? So I'm just sort of wondering if 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 there's support for conditioning the permit. Who is the one who has to fill those conditions?
Um, I think that it can be structured so that it just is. Um. Yeah, this is a requirement which needs to be done. Who does it? It's not, I guess necessarily not.
Thanks.
So, but I have several questions. What would happen is then they would deal with the county to to fulfill the requirements of of an approval. And so the county would be in position to say you failed to do that. Did either zoning certificate or something. I mean, it sounds like we're automatically, we would be the enforcement authority if it was a condition of our approval.
Yeah, um. Well, the enforcement authority would be planning department to ensure that that condition is actually satisfied. And then whatever time period the or this commission would recommend that the commissioners put on. Which is their specific, I believe that there are specific timelines within the zoning resolution. Uh, for, you know, when a condition has to set, so aren't there? I'll dig some. Yeah. Um, the one thing I would would mention is is the building is already permitted. Um, so if the building and the sighting of the building is what game and fish is worried about and asking about, it's already been permitted. So what we're asking for or what this application for is for is simply to use the building that's currently permitted on the property as a school in addition to the residence that's also in it.
Okay, I guess. So what? How does this work?
So if you're asking to to condition this, you're asking them to, if the building is already on the property, which I assume it is, you're asking them to not move the building and move things if it doesn't meet the criteria of the the game and fish. Like I said, we're, the building is permitted, the structure is, if it it's been permitted, whether it's on the property or not, I'm not sure. And that's a question for the school district, but what we're asking is to use that building as a as a school.
I guess I'm a little confused procedurally. What? Is the conditional use of an existing building that is before us?
Correct. Yeah, because it's the the use of a structure that already exists. Um, it's just changing use from dwelling to school.
Well, I guess what seems a little odd there is that, so I go out and build my building under some completely other criteria and then come to.
The building is permitted as a residence.
Okay, which was a accepted use in the agriculture zoning as a accessory dwelling in or something.
Uh, well, it's it's on a, I think it's over 2,000 acre ranch, um, so they can have one dwelling per 35 acres. Um, so it's just permitted as a principal structure, principal building or principal residence, whatever, primary residence.
Okay, so the question for us is whether that existing building can be used as a school.
Correct.
Correct.
It'd be the same as if you, you know, took a residence and then turned it into a business.
Yeah, all right. I'm just trying to frame this appropriately. Okay.
So what what does it mean that the county commissioners already provisionally approved this?
Um, so there was a request made by the school district, um, to be allowed to um, place the building and, um, start using this as a school until they can be properly permitted. Just because the school year, um. Deadlines and things and other other things, maybe that the school district is better able to to explain the reasoning behind all of this and why this is coming to us right now instead of, you know, before, um. Basically, it's, they just that they are allowing them to go forward as they go through this process. If they end up denying them the conditional use permit, I'm not sure exactly how that'll work.
If I may.
Please.
We approved it because it was something that needed to be done like yesterday. Um, it, school was going to be starting already. They needed a an answer almost immediately. And so we, uh, approved it, uh, just temporarily till it went through the process so that they could indeed get things in place. I believe at that time they may not have even had a teacher hired quite yet, but, uh, obviously the family wanted to be able to start the school year at the same time as if we had a child in the school district. So we went ahead and approved that conditionally. Pending, uh. Well, not pending, but you still would have to go, the school district still would have to go through the process.
I don't, I don't think, there is such a thing, Mr. Harris, just for again, while we're having a discussion procedure here.
Uh, it's been done.
Okay.
I don't. I was not present at that meeting. I understand the the urgency. I mean, at that point, it's almost akin to emergency role making.
Okay, I mean, I don't, I don't know that anybody here is opposed to this concept, but I I it all does sound a bit extra uh, procedural to be charitable. Uh. I mean, I suspect that because you're handing my server about the only one, so what's the game and fish comments with some sympathy?
To an extent, I mean, it's it's like if we have a certain unfortunate action, ultimately the goal is that they come into compliance. Their land use is already not in accordance with zoning resolution, but we say, hey, if you seek these permits and you get approved, then. Yeah, but you've been satisfied on hard work, so.
All right, it sounds to me like this commission has, this is not a, this is not a decision. There is nothing to be decided here, right? I mean, it's not an option for us to say we deny the conditional use. It doesn't sound to me like, but all right, do it. Let's proceed. Are there other questions for Mr. Gerch while we're talking about staff? Okay, I had a, just a couple of of small things and maybe, I guess this will then go forward to the board and do order. It's a bit of a done deal. When I read the applicant sections, I would like, seem to be the chapter four, section two would be appropriate to include. That's what we find schools as a condition to use in the land use table. I was gonna say, what are the relevant pieces? Uh. And then first, I'm always after the findings, so I don't know if this needs to be corrected, but as I'm reading through the staff report, just to give you guys some feedback. When I read, you have to find that the applicant has provided such site plans or survey maps as required. It would be useful at that point to have the staff report say, and if they did provide site plans, similarly, reading under kind of B, little B, uh, will not harm. Okay, what was the staff analysis? Was it that they won't harm? We'll assume that and perhaps it's included later on. Same thing under C, it would be useful as aid to turn these into explicit findings where that staff would advise us to accept as a finding that public services are available. So just a kind of a feedback on on the reports that we've been improving those over the over the months where we get a staff response rather than simply a recitation of what the what the applicant submitted. I too was going to ask about the game and fish comments. But let's go in in order here. Number 10, exterior lighting. Staff response says exterior lighting should be screened so that it is directed down. The word should catches my eye. Is that a valid requirement? Is that simply something that we're advising them? Uh, that and then at the next stage, none of the refuge, refuse services. Does the material we see in front of us constitute a requirement? It just doesn't seem like shoulds are the right words. Um, so to tell me what the status of the approval would be as written.
I don't know. Um, must be screened. I I don't know, whatever.
Well, I mean, what is it says should be screened? Does that constitute a direction that it must be followed? Or do we need to change our finding to must? I'm just looking for for structural guidance.
I mean, we do have lighting standards that do require them shielded, so I would say must be screened.
Oh, all right.
It is a requirement.
It is a requirement.
By our zoning resolution, yeah.
Okay, then then maybe it's just the phrasing that I I I paused on when it looked kind of advisory. So the statement you just made would be most useful at this juncture of saying, yes, that will be required.
Right, okay.
That's just the the clarity of these for future uses. Just a general advice from this commissioner at least. Then I appreciated that Joe added the dwelling is allowed due to the size of the parcel. Already been approved because we previously was not clear where the residential part future use play. Then I too caught on the game and fish recommendations. Can you tell us? Are those being met? They're suggesting be 100 feet from Metal Oak Creek. Is it? Uh, these are questions for the applicant?
Yeah, probably questions for the applicant. Um. I mean, when when we permitted the building, um, that is not our requirements to permit a residential structure. Um, there does not have to be a setback of any kind from a riparian area. Um, so. Uh, and I'm not sure if it's shown on the site plan or not. I mean, I could pull up the zoning certificate and look um, to see if if that's shown and how far it is away, but I, that's not a setback that they would have to show on the site.
Okay.
So I can't answer it affirmatively or?
Okay, fair.
Another consideration with the game and fish comments is ultimately any sort of condition that's attached has to be connected directly to a criteria required for approval. Our finding required for approval, um, and there's not a general wildlife impact, um. Finding for conditional since the closest they get is water quality, air quality. Economic possibly would be a little bit of a stretch, but. Or perhaps.
Okay, now I'm back looking at the findings. Let's let's look at those economic impacts. We don't have an environmental impact. Water quality would be the. Water quality would be the the home for a setback from a stream perhaps. And and I believe we have in the past uh required uh wildlife friendly fencing, for example. That has been found to be acceptable. A conditional use is not a use by right, it would seem appropriate to a con- conditioned, no?
Uh, that would definitely open the door for a finding of arbitrary and precious, because there's no no regulation to tie it to. Um, when you kind of bind your criteria for approval, which you have to have some sort of objective criteria. Otherwise, it's going to be facially fat to be arbitrary and precious. Um, now, if you stray beyond that, uh, absent you know, some connection to what is in the regulations, that is arbitrary and precious action, because it's not founded upon any sort of objectivity uh which has been identified by regulation. Uh, perhaps in the past, that has been an ask, uh, you know, you can always ask if not getting involved to do something. Uh, but that is different than a true condition.
All right, the I'm reading proposed condition, you shall not harm the public health, safety and welfare of the community. Let's let's take the issue.
So that's just a police power, that's that's a raw objective, that's not that's a little bit of a stretch.
Well, I suspect the following findings, I guess, I mean, let's take this to extreme, let's say this was a building that was originally erected for, I don't know, store and tacky. But it's turned into a school, it's suddenly got traffic and people coming and going and all manner of activity associated with it, that's the deleterious to stream quality.
Well, yeah, so we have water, traffic, parking. That's required findings.
Okay, so if the game and fish were objecting to its impact on water quality, then that would
be an easier fit.
All right, all right.
And to a certain extent, if it's already there, it would be hard for it to be on a what do you call them, barrows, mustang, correct? Stand, sagebrush stand.
Well, the 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 use, as you point out, this is what we're permitting, which is a much expanded use over if it were a
Yeah.
Okay.
That's true, but and and part of the use is the structures or improvements to the land. Um, we amended our definitions to include that. Uh, but with it already being existing, I mean, absent, and perhaps that's a question for the applicant. Is there going to be further improvement of properties, some capacity?
Uh, other comments, questions, concerns?
Well, I guess I I share the concern about well, you know, first of all, we reach out to game and fish all the time and it's when they actually have comments, it makes you sort of sit up because because we don't often hear from them, we wish we heard from them more often. I just, I know you're saying general welfare is sort of a general policing concept. Um, but you know, the Albany County Comprehensive Plan talks quite a bit about the value of wildlife uh for for the residents of the county. Um, so I don't think it's a a total stretch to say that that's not a shared value.
So you're basing it off the comp plan without it being a regulation, that's a massive issue.
No, I guess we have noxious weeds in our zoning resolution, we have um water quality, traffic parking, um. We have wildlife friendly fencing.
As part of subdivision.
Right, as part of subdivision. I mean, so I guess, I guess you're right, we don't have anything specific about about the environmental welfare for the sake of wildlife. We have conditioned conditional use permits for towers when we've asked them to not have lighting because of the bird attraction and danger. Um, I mean, I think we 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 have a series of incidences where we have taken into consideration wildlife comments from game and fish uh in less, you know, and and I guess pretty unobtrusive ways asking to not have lighting on the tower. But there is, there is some kind of precedence in history of us.
There certainly is, um, and like what the findings necessary for approval for a tower permit, you know, we have a environmental index. Which is broader than just water or air. Uh, so, I mean, perhaps it's it's an opportunity to revisit those findings necessary for approval for conditional use permits. There's, the commissioners feel there's sort of a lapse in their coverage.
I would support that, I know wildlife is a super important value and it's taken a lot of hits and it seems like it would have been relatively easy to be five hundred feet away instead of a hundred feet away. If the building is already there and the land is already disturbed, we probably don't want to disturb more land. It's a weed thing and, you know, and a lot of reasons, but but it would have been nice if we could have accommodated this comment.
Yeah, I I guess what what I would take from this discussion is exactly what Mr. Harris suggested. I feel like that's a hole in our in our findings. That and the whole point of conditional use as opposed to use by right is that it is a, it's special circumstances. It's not something that you'd normally find in exile. Um, and so it just comes to us as an exception and uh ought to be held to a a higher standard. It's even in, and that the fact that this particular use is is quite uh benign and has the support, that that should be irrelevant, as we've gone through a hundred times, we go through these things. The personalities of the applicants and our attitudes are, should be something we can set aside and and proceeded in an unbiased and consistent way. Um, all right, uh, are we ready to hear from the applicant? Let's see, we have somebody here and appreciate your patience.
Oh, no problem.
Give us, give us, uh, introduce yourself, uh, tell us what you got.
Yeah, I'm Randy Wilkson, Chief Operations Officer for Albany County School District. Thank you for having us here tonight. I think I can uh shed some light on some of these different things. What this is going to be is a school, the students are approximately uh one quarter of a mile, we'll have one teacher up there also. Uh, at this time, there's no FERCer students that are in the area that are coming into the school, it would be a case, uh, case six school. Um, I'll just start uh going through the information, uh, we we did take uh these reports uh very seriously. Um, the first one I'll I'll address is the uh assessor's office where I'm working at, actually with uh Jackie Peterson, I believe is her name, with the assessor's office. Uh, taking pictures as we go, the building is in place up at uh on the uh land at this time. Uh, the bill of sale we'll we'll share with them so that they have that also uh from from uh uh Hardin County. So how this started, this started about four years ago. Um, it was denied by the Wyoming Department of Education originally or or not approved. It was just left out, I won't say it's denied, it was just uh bypassed. Uh, it was brought back up um in the legislature in March. It was a line item for a a three hundred thousand dollar school to be built on the uh Solon Easy Ranch. And that came into fruition on July first. Uh, money came available on July eighth and the project was approved by the Wyoming School uh Facilities Department on twelve August uh twenty twenty-four. So that's kind of a background how we got here, this was applied for by uh the ranchers. Uh, Carson and Anna Anderson, upon the uh the owner, the trustees of the ranch up there, and that's where we went. Um, going on into the uh Wyoming Game and Fish Department, uh, this is actually three hundred and seventy-two feet from the uh Antelope Creek. Um, so so it's not within the hundred feet of of Antelope Creek. Uh, we we are working with the landowner uh to develop an implement man uh the plan to uh uh treat my dirt for noxious weeds, will also work in the Larry Rivers Conservation District uh with them to uh provide the native grass seed recommendations and planning instructions et cetera, so we can take care of that, that that's all in our plan that we're doing. Uh, the great thing about this, also sharing this with the teacher we have up there, I think this, the the information that was set with the game and fish is an excellent opportunity for a learning experience for our youngsters in the school up there also. Um, and it's been recommended to the teacher uh when school gets started that we contact the Wyoming game fish to actually have them come up and do some some learnings in our school so that that would help, okay? Um, I think that was the things that I saw in here that that needed to be addressed. I will answer any other questions that you may have for me. Uh, but uh, we we took this stuff seriously and was was looking at it so we could remedy the situation. It is our our, just like yours, it is, I mean, it's environment, I've lived in Wyoming. Uh, my family homesteaded here when it was South Coast Territory, so we've been in Wyoming longer in Wyoming and I want to take care of it. So, uh, but if there's any questions, I'll I'll try to answer them for you.
Uh, thank you, questions for school district?
No, three hundred and seventy-two feet is a lot better than less than a hundred.
Yes.
So, glad to hear that.
Uh, Mr. Wilkinson, is it Wilkinson or?
Wilkinson.
Wilkinson.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just curious, is the, so is the parcel that it's on owned by the the school district or just just the house?
Nope, we have a a uh a no cost lease for from the landowners to have this on their land. Uh, it is actually owned by Albany County, the building's owned by Albany County School District, but not the land.
So in the event that there is no students to attend the school, what happens to the building and and how do you avoid giving a a a land improvement to a private property owner from from state taxes?
There there's a, there's a few things we do. Uh, we we right now, we have four, five different schools up in northern Albany County. The problem is we can't keep roads open between the individual schools, that's why we end up having to put another school another one. We have schools that were built in nineteen uh nineteen twelve, I believe it's Cottonwood School up there, we take care of them every year. State of Wyoming gives us money to, it it's called, they put them into a mothball status. At that time, they give us money to kick, keep, uh, take care of them, upkeep, they give us groundskeepers uh uh credits so that we take care of these schools forever. In nineteen ninety-two, the State of Wyoming also created the School Facilities Commission. Nothing can be done with that school without going to the School Facilities Commission and telling them why I would like to give that school to somebody. Um, that's just not something we do. Uh, we try to keep our schools in good shape in case we have to open them at a later date, because we never know when the students are going to be there and we don't want to spend another, you know, three hundred to a million dollars every time a student comes in. So we're looking at this, uh, we we but we have a two by six constructed mo- uh constructed modular up there. Uh, metal roof, we believe it, it will be there for many years.
And so the district can't be evicted from the property that they don't own?
That is correct, we have a lease, a signed lease with that, that the, that our uh uh council put together for this project, just like we have with every other school, we don't own any of the land, we have, we have a one up on the uh True Ranches, we have one up on the Garrett Ranches, we have one on the Kennedy Ranches. Uh, we have one on the Vale Ranch, all those have leases that have stood the test of time, like I said. Uh, some of them over a hundred years, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
What are the terms of those leases, forever or?
Yes, until we have a mutual agreement, and so a mutual agreement takes both parties to be.
Okay, so it's a perpetual no cost lease?
Yeah.
That, there was such thing, all right. Um, that's.
I hope that answered some of your questions, uh, we 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 took, like I said, we took it serious, the other thing I didn't address was the lighting. The only lighting that's up there, we didn't put any outdoor lighting. Uh, we we have the lighting that came on the house that points down as it is already, we didn't do any other lighting as a request by the landowners also.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Wilkinson, um, on this aerial image we have of the property showing um a square survey, and it looks like it's two hundred feet by two hundred feet by two, yeah. Um, where actually in that box is the building?
It is on, so we we moved it a little bit east, there was a, on on that, I think you'll see a road, a uh two-track road. Uh, non-improved, what we did was move that over to that, so we would do less uh uh have have less impact to the uh the uh sagebrush and stuff up there, they didn't use that two-track. So as we moved it up that way, there was less impact to the uh to the environment up there.
How would you describe it relative to the box itself, I mean, is it center or?
I would say to the west, the west side of it.
Okay. And I I I was just looking at the box relative to the creek and you said three hundred and seventy-two feet, that makes more sense.
Yeah. It also had to do with the uh when when they put power in, where the power had to be also with their reason. So there was a lot of things that just shifted things slightly.
So so I guess a question kind of timing and maybe this is for future projects and maybe there will ever be such a one. At some point, the school district became aware that they would need a conditional use permit for this to to proceed.
And.
And and was that, uh, that seems like it could have been known quite a long time ago.
Yes, so as with most government entities, until that law goes into effect, I cannot move forward on it. So that law did not take effect till July first. My, I was hamstringing up until that time to move forward with this project.
Yeah, yeah, I just, how how might this have been done in in a more accommodating way with game and fish, but you you guys moved forward doing what you thought was best and and as we all would, not putting it in the middle of the creek. Um, but I guess you could have brought game and fish in as an advisor, but you'd have been doing that kind of just without any structure at all.
Yeah, yeah, you you know, it was uh one of those things that until I saw the stuff, I I actually did not even think about bringing them into it. I I will be the first to admit.
And and the only way that formally it would have been had it come through this process. Uh, but like you say, you couldn't have started this process before you had a the school district's intention was not to do this up until
Yes.
Legislature, yes.
You could say we knew when when it passed in March, taken effect July first, but I can't move forward until it becomes law. And that was July first is when those laws took effect.
Okay, no, uh, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for your enthusiasm for the project.
All right, thank you. Any further questions?
Just note that the game and fish comments are dated July twenty-sixth, so they didn't have that information anyway.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's a sequencing here that's that's not amenable, I mean, I'm picturing a situation where, let's say, this is, it sounds like there's considerable sympathy here to include in our conditional use findings of a suitable accommodation of the wildlife impacts.
Yeah.
But in this particular case, how could that have? How could that have been accommodated?
I think it's worth noting, these are very, very beneficial service actions, they're unlikely to be duplicated our lifetimes. No, seriously.
Famous last words, but all right.
I mean, this is a one-line item for, you know, funded by me that, and there's no way they could have done it in advance, this is four or five years in the making. Uh, this is obviously going to happen. I mean, the the kind of measures of.
Well, so, okay, we're not going. All right, other?
And another, I mean, another comment would just be, I I think the Andersons care more about this land than anybody. So they will do what they can to to mitigate the impacts, I'm sure, right?
Oh, I I would agree with that wholeheartedly, and and that's. Oh, I, I would agree with that wholeheartedly. And, and that's part of the reason we did move it. We moved it a little closer to the road. Then, you, you know, uh, so that we had the minimum, what we felt we needed for parking, just because next to the road, there was. No hat, no sage brush or anything like that. So for the parking lot, we didn't have to take anything else out. Uh, you know, they, they, they thought about it considerably, um. You know, uh, once we had this report, we, we drilled well, uh, last week. Uh, we made sure that they drove around the sagebrush and so, you know, we, I, I believe we've taken all the steps that we can to mitigate the. And, and the Andersons are very much attuned to that also.
Yeah, and then they're the steward.
Probably more so even than the game and fish.
I would expect that.
Yeah.
Alright, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, further, other public comments, or let's, we should, I guess, formally open public hearing. Are there? Anybody here who would like to address this beyond what they've already heard? Is there anybody on the Zoom call? I, I guess if there were, we would see the, their presence. Okay. Seeing a hearing done, I'm open to a motion to close the public hearing on conditional use application CU O two-two-four.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Your second. I'll second that. Uh, motion, move to second, close public hearing. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, done. Um, okay, further discussion. All of my comments don't go towards the school, the commissioner, commissioner Platts concern. What I do have some concern about is the procedure for approving conditional uses. Not this particular concern, conditional use. Um, and there seems to be some flaw in the system. That. That, that we are presented with something of a fait accompli where a building is. Built in compliance with the zoning and then it's possible for someone to come to us for a conditional use of the building. And we are, I guess, politically, psychologically constrained to say yes. Uh, and maybe that's just a, just for us, we, we have to be prepared to say no. If the conditional use were unsuitable under the findings that are required of us, we have the prerogative to say no.
Yeah, I see no problems, I know.
I'm just thinking out loud here of how this, how this goes forward. Alright, I guess I've said all I. Need to, perhaps more, uh, thoughts from the commission, otherwise?
I don't have a problem with this particular one, although it would be nice if it had been done in a regular fashion. But I, I would love to see a wildlife finding added to the.
Uh, okay, would someone like to make a motion to move forward on this?
Chairman, I move to recommend the Board of County Commissioners approve AC SD one conditional use application CU DAS zero three S two-four. Adopting and incorporating the staff analysis, finding the fact and conclusion to law as each or state in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Second.
Second.
Further discussion of the motion. Hanning, how say you?
Aye.
Spot.
Aye.
Mister, Miss Kornick?
Aye.
And David is absent, Hankley, aye, it's unanimous. Uh, we wish you well and hope that the Anderson children thrive under this educational environment.
Well, I'm sure they will, thank you.
Thank you, but you're, you're welcome to, to, to leave. Okay. Citizen comments on non-agenda items. We've tried to, to move that forward in our agenda to make it easy for everyone. I don't see that we haven't any one. It was like discussed with everyone. So, uh, well, we had, we had one and he had his say it, we listened to it. Okay, current planning projects, we have none this month. Which moves us to the general category of other items and announcements. Let's just take those in the order that staff suggested them to us. Mr. Gerch, potential planning projects list prioritization. What do we, what do we think in there?
Alright. I can't read this on the screen.
A little small for my tired eyes, but.
Well, I can, uh, I'll make it big enough to kind of see what we're, we're looking at here.
Okay, yep, now, now we're talking.
Yeah. Um, so, Mr. Mr. Chair contacted me and, uh. When we do our agenda look, look over, um, said, hey, maybe we should talk about, um. You know, some priorities or planning projects and priority lists. Um, this is something we've done with past commissions. The past commission actually had a whole form that we filled out and to prioritize different projects and, and whatever. Um, so what I did is I just put it together, kind of a spreadsheet of, of what we're working on now. Uh, to give you an idea of what's in process, what are some of the upcoming, um, projects that you'll probably see. Um, and then kind of leave it up to you, um, to discuss any. Or, I don't know, discuss to, discuss whether one is a priority list for, for this commission, something you guys want to look into and discuss and. Come up with some projects. Um, is there anything specifically that's important to you that we should be? Be discussing, um, like, you know, adding wildlife. Honestly, that would be so easy to do. I mean, it doesn't even need to go on a list like this. We could just probably just bring you something to look at, you know?
Be great.
So, um, but really, just, just, this is a time to discuss. Um, maybe, Mr. Chair, you can kind of discuss your thoughts about this and, and we can have a little discussion.
Yeah, yeah, some of this is, is actually the updates, but I appreciate the fact that, that, uh. In fact, sometimes I do lists and I put something on them that I've already done, so I could have the satisfaction crossing it off.
Sure.
That's kind of where your first couple of probably fall. Alright, well, let's, let's just play with the list for a second here. A P L Z, both of those first two are now. Done as far as P and Z is concerned, right? We have moved something forward to the board level.
Right, right. And that's what I have, I mean, I can kind of show you. Um, in my notes, I note that. I mean, come up with this arbitrary percentage complete up, just throw a number in there and then. The notes, um, bas- basically just say it's, it'll be a public hearing on November first. So that's kind of the next thing we're looking at, but.
Yeah, no, I, that's, 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 that's good. It isn't, uh, it isn't done until it's done, done.
Right, right. So some of you guys are just not.
Yeah, in fact, a little matrix like this, it's just a standard part of our, our packet might be useful, just so kind of, we could keep track where things are. Small waste of regulations, we'll discuss those a little more later. The updating and ensuring design standards, that's one we haven't really done much with so far. Assume it's got a. What's your percent on that guy?
Uh.
Is this a live spreadsheet?
Uh, what do you mean by live?
Could you just go ahead and hide column C and D?
Say what?
If you hit column C and D, then we'd.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
See your status at the same screen as the first two, just as.
I didn't figure out.
Quick and easy. If you just.
I missed it.
Yeah, just have them both selected, that your menu will offer a hide option. Yeah, yeah, there we go, so we can kind of see from side to side. Very, very growth overlay, text and map. Yeah, and I G A, okay, and, and, and along with that would come the appropriate zoning changes. Which is, I guess, then what's your next item, line twelve?
Um, the zoning district, land use table, so doing some updating to current zoning districts that are in. Our zoning and updating land use table. I'm also definitions. Um, just went through and added definitions for pretty much everything, so.
Oh, I guess I'm distinguishing while you're on this up to the Larry area, growth overlay, that, that, the overlay is going to require some special new zoning things.
Yes.
Is that what you were meaning or is that a separate thing?
No, so, so that's separate. So the Laramie growth area overlay will have new zoning district overlay. Um, but we're looking at, um, I, I think it's been brought up, the commercial, um, we'll, we'll look at splitting the commercial up. Um, and yeah, just adding some more, um, zoning districts to. To better split things up instead of just having, everything goes under this zoning. Uh, just to kind of split up different uses and intensities.
So you're thinking line twelve is county wide?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, okay. And, and chime in, anyone, uh, which, I'll be a discussion here. Uh, uh, the airport overlay, we discussed that several previous projects. Complan updates, zero percent, probably fair. And the wind and the digital signs, um. As I just had, put together my own little quick list in anticipation to this, obviously of the growth area plan, the commercial zoning. Um, all of the cap. Priorities, if there's a sub list that you prepared for us, so, so that ought to be somewhere in this mix is what about all those? I think we left that as something that we thought we might come back to and prioritize. But you did strip out of the cap all of the, the non-regulatory bits, so. The, we'll, we'll throw that on the list. And I don't suggest we're going to finish the list here tonight, but just let's get some ideas out. The railroad buffer zoning, whatever that amounts to, uh. Is something that we had suggested in our earlier discussion is sort of on the wishlist. I'm picturing this as. It's gonna go down through some further low priorities, uh, as, as time and energy permits. Uh, that I would share with the commissioners of a project that's been in the back of my mind, if we can get to it. Is to look at the existing zoning of all those rural residential plots. That, that, that did not come to us through any conscious effort to, to. Assess congruence with the comprehensive plan or anything. They were just tax status thirty years ago. Uh, and I'd like us to come back to that at some point. I haven't made a great deal of progress. I did get the assessor to pitch out a, a GIS layer of. Agricultural lands that have been put in explicit conservation usements. So those would be the kind of no-brainer candidates for. Rezoning out of residential status. But that's something I think we could do by way of just cleaning up our zoning, continuing to shed the. The relics of that tax status basis that we once had to, to try to just turn it into something that really is conscious zoning. As per the complant. Um, so, um, again, chime in here, what I'm thinking of is if Mr. Gerch is amenable, he'll be kind of the. The collection point and throw all your ideas to him and we'll. Get it on a list and then we have a, a moment, we could kind of go through it and rank them. These are obviously the, the high ranking ones. Uh, thoughts from the rest of you? Any particularly issues that have been lurking in the back of your minds that you'd want to make sure on the list and you can think about it over the next month, six months? Well, this will be a live document.
I'm just curious, what is the digital sign about? Didn't we address that in our signs regulations or?
Um, so, sort of, uh, so we don't have specific standards for digital signs. That, um, address what really need to be addressed.
Um, we have a brightness limit.
We have a brightness limit, but that's, that's about it.
Brightness and flashing and.
So, and where this comes from is we, you know, we, we gave an invitation to Lamar. Um, who came to the Board of County Commissioners, I don't think they came to your meetings. Um, but they came to the Board of County Commissioners with, um, some comments when the Board of County Commissioners. Approved the updated sign, sign regulations. Um, and basically we wanted to go forward and make them compliant with all the, the constitutional. Issues that ours had, um, and with the, the opportunity for them to come and discuss anything that they're. They're worried about or want to, want to work with, work with us on. And, um, so we did, we, we sent that out. Um, we met with them and their, um, council, um, to discuss, um, the things that they're worried about. And really, it's, it's just the digital signs. Um, they want to have digital sign standards so that they can. They can get digital signs permitted in, in, in areas that make sense for them. Um, which is usually some of these, these properties that have signs on them already. Um, that are, that are next to the city. That's kind of what they're, what they're looking at doing. Um, apparently they've been working with the city of Laramie on these, on standards as well. Um, which, you know, I kind of wish we knew all this stuff beforehand, but it was like kind of at the end that they. They were shown up and, um, you know, partly we probably should have, you know. Tried contacting them beforehand or whatever. I can't remember if we did any of that or not, um, other than just the regular notices we do. And so, so that's what it is. We're waiting for them to basically, we met with them, they're going to send us some standards that they're kind of looking at. Um, the state has standards that they have to meet already. Um, so I, I would imagine if we bring you something, it'll be similar to what the state's standards are. Um, for your, your, your look and, and potentially approval at some point. But we haven't heard back from them since, since we met with them, I don't know, a month or two ago, so.
So who's Lamar?
Oh, so Lamar, excuse me, Lamar is the, is basically this. Um, it used to be Next Generation, yet Next Gen is the, the sign company that was mostly in the, the county for billboards.
See the name at the bottom.
Yeah, so if you look at pretty much, probably like ninety-some-odd percent of the, the billboard signs in the city of Laramie. And in Albany County are now owned by Lamar. Um, so they're a sign company, they're actually a big sign company from, that, that's when I lived in Idaho, that was. Only thing you saw was Lamar signs. Then we came here and it was a different company, but.
They're US out of Canada. They're a very large advertising corporation.
Yeah, they bought out all the, the, the signs that were owned by the, the other company. I think it was Next Gen or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, so. More information you want, but there you go.
So, at, at present, um. They're subject to, uh, size and number and all the things that we put together, but we have no explicit prohibition on a digital sign.
As long as it meets the, um, candalera. Brightness standard.
And, and didn't we have something about it can't, it can't be too, too much motion? I forgot how we.
Yeah, no, no. Stuff like that, so.
But it could change its, its pitch, everybody like those two.
Right, yeah, right. So what ours would do is just, you know, tailor, tailor some standards specifically for digital signs. Um, basically incorporating what the state has so that we're, we're on the same page as them and, um. Yeah.
I wouldn't encourage this commission if that does come across to work into the research done on the brightness standards. Um, it was interesting when I looked into it.
It, it, it was the suggestion that perhaps ours are, are too strict or too, or too lax.
I'm sure of any advertising agency there. They want much, much higher. Um, but that doesn't necessarily jive with, um, highway safety studies.
Alright.
I mean, just, just a pitch for, I mean, these guys made the pitch to us. It was kind of interesting because. Um, these signs that they'll put up, um, they often use them, they'll have like a community service type. They, you know, they change sign faces and they will allow like cities and counties to do a little advertising for basically free. Um, that's just something that they do as part of their, what they're doing, which I, I thought that was kind of cool, but.
So at present, the billboards in Albany County are all grandfathered, correct?
Um, yeah.
But there would be no restriction on turning one of those into a digital sign?
Uh, if they're replacing the structure, then that would take you out of non-conforming status.
It's a new sign.
And so it would be one of these, some level of replacement that would trigger it not being the same sign?
Correct.
And then your sense is that digital, di- digitalization would do that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's the same thing, like, even if you were to take a house and replace it with a different house, then it's the same footprint. It's not the footprint, I mean, that's a new structure.
Okay.
And signs are regulated, structures. Because that's when we have the authority to regulate.
This is starting to sound like one of my philosophy classes. The thing about the boats, take the boats apart plank by plank and put it together somewhere else, it's the same boat. If you replace one of the planks, is it now the same boat?
Somebody stole all my stuff and replaced it with the same thing. Have I been damaged? Alright, but just to know where we are now, we, we, we are not, there's not a loophole there that would suddenly see. A digital sign out there, this billboard.
Yeah.
Locations, okay. Interesting. Um, just a, a quick riff on the sign ordinance as we're moving in the campaign season. Some of us do a lot of sign building and I consulted the county sign regulations just yesterday to make sure that what we were doing was compliant. So there are people who read the regulations. And I found them to be coherent and acceptable, so.
Good.
A little bit of feedback.
And constitution.
And not. Most important, fair enough. Okay, so, uh, this idea of a, of a growing list of a wishlist, if you will, uh, composition of the list shouldn't be a big burden, but I think it would be useful for us to kind of keep, keep in mind what is we're trying to do and, and the prioritization of it. And as I say, the, somewhere interleaved in here, some of those, those things, those educational endeavors like, uh, come out of the cap. Other thoughts? Blatt, you've got a few, uh, you were after multifamily dwellings at one point, or have you been convinced that we've adequately accommodated your interest there?
Well, no, I mean, once, once the IGA is done and, uh, these new, so just coming to the fact, that's going to, that's going to be extremely helpful.
Okay.
And Commissioner Blatt is, uh, spearheading the airport overlay.
I've come up twice now, I'm not sure why, but.
How did you get nominated?
Apparently Commissioner Blatt is spearheading. I appreciate that, I do like my air.
Yeah.
But we do have a proactive function as well as our, our simply accepting applications that come to us. And I congratulate my fellow commissioners on their enthusiasm. Just according.
So I haven't actually looked at the wind energy regulations, but I know there are projects going up. I mean, how, how urgent is that? Are, are they very much a native updating because projects are?
No, um, honestly, it's almost been a couple of years ago, but the Environmental Advisory Committee, they did a review of them and provided us some, um, comments and, and thoughts and, I mean, really the, their general comment, it was like, these are pretty comprehensive, they're doing a good job. There's just a few things to change. Um, they're not urgent, no.
Okay.
Um, I mean, honestly, the solar ones, that might be something to look at because all we did was plug in what the state has. Um, but I, I think we're going to see solar power. Before we see another wind project. I, I guess I could be wrong, I don't know, I guess, I don't know. Just seems like most of the area that's prone to, uh, redevelopment or wind energy is, is kind of gobbled up at this point, but.
Is it?
I don't know. We might see a few, I mean, there, there's probably some, you know, land somewhere that they could do this, but. But, I mean, all this energy stuff is, is complicated. It's not just like, oh, this is a great place for wind, look at all that, the wind. I mean, there's also the, the problem of transportation. You got transporting that energy to somewhere else.
Right.
Um, and, and what that entails, um, but yeah. They are putting these things up though in our county now, um, Rock Creek and Boswell Springs are both going full bore ahead, um.
And rail ties too, right?
Rail, rail ties.
I thought I heard that was going in.
Your own legal.
A little delay.
No, I thought all that.
Yeah.
Wasn't there?
It's moving forward, but.
It's moving forward, yeah.
Slipped out.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's been approved, but it hasn't started construction.
I just wouldn't want to be faced with a proposal and inadequate regulations, that would be a problem.
No, I, I think ours are adequate. There's, there's a few tweaks, tweaks I think we should, we could and should make, but yeah, it's not something that's high on the priority list. We're not going to be, uh, you know, having, there's not going to be some huge problems if we permit any more under these regulations, so.
Okay. And I think at one point we heard some pretty compelling reasons to update the comprehensive plan because it's not, it's been a long time, right?
Right.
Not particularly useful right now.
And that's something that, I mean, again, that's not a, let's do this today. I mean, we've got so many projects right now, that's, that's kind of a huge undertaking, even if staff kind of works through it, it's going to be. I mean, a comprehensive plan, you really want, when you're making amendments, you really want to get the community behind you and get their input. Um, because that's what drives everything else, right? All the regulations, um, so, so to take that time, I, I don't, I don't think that's going to happen in the next year or two, maybe three, I don't know.
But, I mean, ideally, looking at other counties, um, you know, their, their standard for zoning district amendment or zone changes. Does this bring it into compliance with the comprehensive plan or does it not? And um, you know, or is there some fundamental error in its designation of the comprehensive plan? Where something else would justify a change, but you know, if you get that right, then it kind of just makes zoning district amendments binary.
Yeah, I think it was a kind of a subset of the comprehensive plan that, that some of this is, is reaching back and having it catch up with us. There's, the one thing that comes to my mind are our priority growth areas, for example, in the comprehensive plan are now it consists of what we have done with the, uh, park protection overlay zone and now some of the growth plans. So those aspects of, of the comprehensive plan probably should be a little higher priority. They're simple fixes, but that would, would bring us into conformity with a kind of, we're already doing it, so.
Right, right.
Back, backfilling, but I think those backfills would be appropriate so that someone reading that comprehensive plan and looking at, say, the priority growth areas would have a, a fair statement of where we are on our growth areas.
Yeah, and, and honestly, I mean, that is something we can work on and we've already done the, the public input for the growth plan. So if we're just modifying like prior growth area, you want to follow what that is or whatever.
Right.
You know, um.
Well, and that, and that, again, that map that comes to my mind is one that was modified first. Uh, APOZ boundary was put in and then the, the comprehensive plan map got modified north, but not south. So again, just to clean up things like that, we ought to be sensitive to it and sweep those up as, as they become apparent.
Yeah. And, and just, you know, full disclosure, I just threw this together as more of an example. I mean, I tried to throw things that we've talked about and, and things that we're doing so that we have an, have an idea and, and we, we could even break these things up, you know, we could break up, you know, we're gone, you know, integrating the learn regrowth area plan and cleaning up, you know, that's what we're doing for the comprehensive plan, not just like a whole update. I just, I just threw that in there because it was, was something we talked about, so.
Yeah, all right, so, um, I guess what I'm thinking is that this list gets circulated and, and we uh, make it a little homework assignment over the next few increments to add to it and not to try to get too granular, but something like the comprehensive plan, there's the comprehensive plan and then quite separate from that, a little stuff. So anyway, let's, let's, uh, give Mr. Gersh some feedback if that's acceptable. Okay, heard this forward. Um, okay, other thoughts on this, this little project? A project to define projects? Um, all right, let's move on to staff updates, uh, remind us where we are on. She could go through the order in your order, we can ask.
Okay, sounds good, um, so zoning resolution amendments to the protection overlay zone. Um, so I'm going to do one and two together, so, because they're, they're all tied together here. Um, so we brought these forward for, they were published for a public hearing. They went to the Board of County Commissioners, um, before the wastewater regulations came to the public or for public hearing before the board. Um, we had sent these out after you approved them to the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality. Um, well, between that time us publishing it and the public hearing, um, DEQ got, got back with us kind of in the middle of all of that. Um, and they did some review, um, and they wanted us to add a section from chapter twenty five, which is chapter twenty five of the water quality rules are what, um, the state regulates septic systems at the local level with. Um, and so that's what the standards that we have to have minimum standards that meet, our, our minimum standards have to meet that. Um, so they wanted us to include, um, I think it's section six out of that chapter, chapter twenty five into our regulations. Um, so that we can regulate the advanced treatment units. And what chapter or section six says is it basically says, um, and it will apply to more, this will be a general thing that we add to our wastewater regulations. It applies to more than just our protection overlays on. But what that section says is that, um, if, if it's not a, a system like a conventional system and it's using new and innovative ways to treat wastewater, um, then if you meet these criteria, then you can use, use this type of system. So, um, DEQ want us to add that as part of it. So with that information and with that inclusion, um, that became a substantive change. Um, just because it's, it's adding a whole new section that will, will cover more than just what the protection overlays on, um, standards would be. So that required us to, at that meeting, we asked for permission to go out to, to publish and, and set a new public hearing. So it's being moved back, the public hearing will be held on November first, um, which is a Friday, so. Um, which is, I think the fifth is, uh, election day, so we moved it forward. But so November first, that will be on that agenda for a public hearing. To move back to number one, which is the zoning resolution amendments, um, that will also be moved, we're moving these together, um, to be approved at the same time because we don't want to approve zoning resolution that we just took out the wastewater standards from, um, so that we can keep those until we have the standards properly placed where they should be. So as long as they're, they're approved on the same day, um, then everything from, from here on to that day is, is the same as what we've been doing. We have the additional PE standard, um, for our regulations for septic systems in the, in the wastewater or in the protection overlay zone. So that's where those projects are. Um, any questions on that?
Um, yeah, I had just a, yeah, a couple, um, and, and maybe this would go to both of you and Mr. Harris, what counts as substantive change? As I looked at the, that the fix, which was basically to drop uh, DEQ chapter twenty five, section six in verbatim as a new section, I was troubled by the fact that it talks about, for example, meets the objectives of these rules. So then now it has been inserted into our larger body of wastewater. There are no objectives. The word isn't, isn't anywhere in our, in our regulations. So one is left a bit, uh, empty handed when they say, what does it mean? Beats the objective of, of these rules. Um, now this isn't a P and Z uh, product, but we, uh, I mean, our, our kind of interest in this isn't wastewater regs is that we want to secure home for our APOZ septics before we take them out of zoning, which is under control. So again, I'd invite you perhaps to consider um, in the, over the period of the, of, of a hearing, I, I would hate to delay it for that, but if there was a way to repair what seems to be a, some kind of, uh, clashes between this language that was extracted from one set of, of rules and put into another, that might be helpful. Similarly to the phrase you just used to providing opportunity for advanced septic systems anywhere in the county, as long as they meet these criteria. But what are those criteria? And, and those words appear several points in the, in the clip from DEQ. Uh, demonstrates the acceptability of the design, for example, and that acceptability of the design term is used three times here. So if there were some way to clarify for an applicant, what that might mean, uh, and maybe that's a more, I think, a more explicit tie to something like ANSI two forty five, now that's an APOZ specific standard. Um, but anyway, I guess I just would invite you in the interest of coherent regulation to, to try to knit that, that new paragraph eighteen into the larger regulation a bit more smoothly.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we pretty much just, I just cut and paste and changed a few words and, um, but I believe that if we, we do some massage, you know, that, um, where that's in what we published, we probably can do it if it's not like crazy change, right?
So, I mean, looking at chapter twenty five, you have section two objective, this chapter contains a minimum standards for the design and construction of small wastewater systems. So that is the objective of the rules.
Oh, so.
Provide the minimum standards for the design and construction of small wastewater systems. Um, looking at our regulations, while it does not have a section header that says objective, it states purpose, the part contained, or this part contains a minimum standards for design, construction of small wastewater facilities. So.
I mean, it's, we could change it to purpose.
Change it to objective. And then it would be the exact same as DEQ.
So maybe my objection is to you to, to say I'm beating the objective and the objective is to have rules. That seems, all right.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not advocating it as a model of regulatory clarity, but that is the minimum. We have to have those provisions in chapter twenty five or something, at least a string of them. So that's our starting basis is chapter twenty five.
Sure.
Uh, which we will be in need of a comprehensive revision of the small wastewater regulations as a whole. So.
All right, man, maybe my comments that go towards that more, more, uh, more complete overhaul of the wastewater regs. But they're kind of highlighted when you read these words, uh, from a consultant's point of view, I'm thinking, okay. The acceptability of the sign and meets the objectives, I think I expect to go find some page that tells me what those are and they're not.
The minimum standards for design and construction of small wastewater systems.
Right. Um, okay, so these are, are perhaps thoughts down the road, but I'll, I'll just give you some feedback of somebody reading these, they're, it, it, it's a bit uh, as you say, it's not a model of, of regulation. Otherwise, I, I concur with the language that we're seeing out for review now. It, it preserves everything that this body recommended to the county commissioners. Um, and, and we pin that on, uh, ANSI standard two forty five. The other things that, that, that came up as I was looking through that is that we also need concurrent with this, a change in the application. And I, assuming that's in the works, so if they pass this, then the application itself will have to be concurrent with this.
Correct.
And the, there's a little introductory stuff on your website about, about those things. Uh, this also promises that we have a list of approved ATUs shall be ma- maintained by the planning department. So is there such a list?
Not this time, no.
So had, we had this been approved last Tuesday, as we had all expected, there would have been a little gap there of, of our ability to respond to people.
Now, which ones are going to be there?
Uh, yeah, I mean, the, the advantage systems that are already going in are the, meet that standard.
Okay, so we have a, there's one thing on our.
It's just not on a specific list, we haven't created the list that shows that, but, but yeah. Right.
So ideally, if somebody comes in November, if the commission is approves this, somebody come in November two and say, hey, what do I need to do? We'll have a, a crisp answer for them.
Yes.
My concern, okay. Um, that's all I had, were there any questions on what has happened to our recommendation? Uh, otherwise, I think it has survived intact, it's just been a few more bobbles attached to it. Okay, uh, that's all I had, as I tried to get my mind around what was happening with wastewater rigs. Uh, next thing on your list was the growth plan?
Uh, so yeah, the intergovernmental agreement, um, I spoke with Philip last week, um, from the city of Lermi. And it sounds like they've received all the comments back from the different departments in the city. Um, they're implementing those or including those into the, the draft intergovernmental agreement. Once that's done, then we're we'll be scheduling a meeting and Philip said within the next couple of weeks. Um, so hopefully we'll, we'll, we'll do that and review what they've done and, um, see where we go next, so. Um, as long as, you know, things haven't been substantially changed, um, and, and that's something to go forward to the, to the board and council. Um, but we'll have to see what the changes. But we'll have to see what the changes are they make. They've had it for an awful long time, so.
So so that won't involve us formally until we get to the point of implementing it through zoning changes.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And then, um, yeah, so we're in the process of also developing in the overlay zone. Which will include. You know, the text amendments, so this description of the overlay zone. On what are the new standards, all of that, and then it'll include a map, which will have the the zone mapped out. I'm showing the, you know, exterior boundaries and then the the different zoning. Overlay zones within the overlay zone and and. And then once we get that together, um, we'll probably send that to the city of Laramie um, to just get them involved with this. And then obviously Matt will look it over and may have. Depends on it. I think what we're doing is going to strip out the developments like the road standards and. Some of those things and put them in our subdivision regulations as its own section for this overlay. And that'll be something we'll probably have Jake look over our engineer. So so we're at the point where we we almost have a draft. We do need to, I need to coordinate with Joe. Since he's working on some of the other zoning stuff to make sure that all meshes together. Um, and then, yeah, hopefully by the end of the year, you guys will see something, so. But that's where we're at. Any questions on that?
Oh, no, lots of questions that will be answered in due course.
Sure.
How that all comes together is still a bit of a of a cipher to me, but. See how that works. How do we, how do we make? Somebody develop small lots. I guess to the extent that we've heard an answer so far, it's it's through requirements for. Identity infrastructure.
Right. We don't make them do anything. If they want to. There'll be a process and the overlay will dictate what that means.
How do we constrain what they do going forward?
Right, yep.
I I can't see us ever specifying a maximum lot size except indirectly. Because what does it, what does it mean to say you're going to do two acre lots that I just sell them ten at a time and I've got twenty four lots? If you really want two acre lots, you're going to have to drive that train some other way than. Simply signing of maximum. The infrastructure that drives the decision for construction decision.
Right now, you can see the city, not the city, but uh. That development Spring Creek going in right now. For seventeen residential lots, they've put in seventeen sets of pipes.
Yeah, that's a, that's a challenge. Okay, other questions on that? Other, the other update that I was going to ask about is the monitoring well project that we were kind of. Peripheral to that the city is moving forward with.
I haven't heard anything since that meeting.
That that meeting was a scoping meeting to which we were invited. Uh, Ms. Hanning, you got any wisdom to offer on that?
Just, um.
Share with us.
Well, the overall goal of the project is to evaluate existing monitoring wells. For their suitability as monitoring wells, we evaluate. The wells that Stan Tech recommended be included in the monitoring well network. Consider whether new wells uh, should be installed. In any gap areas. And to develop. Like a a sampling and analysis plan. For, you know, constituents that. You either want to have this like a Sentinel well for supply wells. Like, um. You know, the the city has to. Routinely analyze water for safe drinking water act constituents and would it be useful to monitor? These monitoring wells for certain constituents of concern. Or constituents that you might associate with. The source areas, the different, the different contaminant sources that Stan Tech identified. And to to, the ultimate goal is just to give a recommendation to the city. On what their monitoring network might be and what to sample it for. And what periodicity to sample it for. And then the city can decide, hopefully with county input. And then, um. Then the city would need to go out to bid for any new wells. So it's it's just a thinking stage.
No, good, good program. And it was, it was, I think the input from the county was was embraced by the city and its consultants, so. Sounds good. Um, other requests for staff updates? We've pretty well covered a lot of ground here.
I think we, and I reported, we.
What did we?
No.
Which was what?
Uh, the resolution or zoning resolution, zoning districts.
Yeah, I guess I felt felt like that kind of took care of that.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of discussed it earlier, um. Joe's working on um, kind of redoing the zoning districts to include more. That will include the the commercial. Splitting those up. Residential stuff. Um, part of his project too will be to um, or what he's working on is to. To update the map as well, so that could hit on some of the things that you're talking about. Charingly, um, because I I think he's already gone through like the whole county map to. To look at some of those areas that are so real residentially shouldn't be. Um, but that information about the, uh, you know, what's under. Conservation or whatever. That would be helpful to 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 make sure that we're hitting all those. Um, when they have conservation easements, but. But yeah, so that that's, that's what we're looking at. Um, like I said, he's he's um, went through and added definitions to pretty much everything that's in the land use table, which will be helpful. Um, for staff for sure to like see where people plug in or whatever. And, yeah. The commercials on, we're looking at to doing a little bit better, requiring a better site plan than we do for our residential stuff. Um, and maybe some additional standards or or commercial. Um, to deal with maybe, I want one of our county engineers, big things is is storm water. Stuff. And so maybe we'll we'll look into that too, to see if that's something that's. We should include in some of this commercial stuff. We don't have a whole lot of commercial and the commercial we do have isn't, isn't the commercial you see in the city for the most part, but. Um, we may see some, I mean, if that. Think that property that we rezoned commercial next to the airport goes in, that's something that. I mean. Stormwater probably should be thought about and that kind of stuff, but we don't have any standards for it, but.
Circling back a little bit, but Mr. Harris, you've you've. Looked at the the whole suite of regulations that kind of picked out some things that you found particularly in need of correction. Like bringing the unconstitutionality of our sign ordinance to our attention. But what does your list look like if if. I can put you on the spot, are there specific? Sets of regulations that that you're anxious for legal part of you to.
Yeah, I mean, uh, growth area. IGA and implementation is going to be very, very important, those restrictions. And specifically worded, uh, I don't know, the. The airport overlay is of particular interest to me. Which is probably why um, I keep giving Commissioner a lot of hard time because I got some interest out of him. Uh, but I'm essentially the the federal standard is that. As a unit, or as a as a local government unit. We have to take steps. We have to be planning and zoning steps uh, that we feel necessary to ensure compatibility with. The airport because it receives FAA funding. Now, of course, that's a standard of, well, it's really whatever the locality deems necessary. So we're not in violation of anything. By not having an overlay. Um, but I guess now that we're seeing more development out there. That will need to get addressed at some point, but. Yeah.
I mean, good. Uh, they, we, we, me and Joe um, met with, Joe and I met with uh. The airport manager, is that what?
Amy Taylor.
Amy's called anyways. Um, not too long ago. Um, so they're they're in the process of completing, and I may have told you this, a master plan for the airport. Um, and so, um, they're getting to the end of that. And one of the things that the the airport is really interested in is just making sure that. Development around the airport doesn't infringe on their ability to to grow and to do things. On on the airport, um, because if you have certain uses. Um, FAA flags in, it's like, okay, well, you can't, you know, that becomes a problem. So, so we actually. They're going to give us a criteria, the things that they need, um, and like the size of this overlay. Um, so once we receive all that stuff, um, Joe or I will probably put that into some type of regulatory form. Um, you know, have them review and make sure, sure that that, um, we meet all their standards so that they can. Protect their ability to continue to grow our little airport out there. I mean, it is an asset to the community. I mean, it gets used pretty, quite a lot for the size of our community, it seems like.
I flew out of there once and it was the most wonderful travel experience I've ever.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I've I've been, I picked, I picked up my son there, my daughter there over the last few years or whatever. And they get off the plane and their plane's pretty packed. I'm kind of surprised, but, um. But yeah, so basically, yeah, what I'm saying is like we've met, we want to make sure that we come up with something to protect their ability to grow. And do the things they want to do and and to continue to have, make it an economically viable. Airport for us. I mean, they get a lot of funding and stuff from the federal government for the flights and things. Um, but they have a lot of ideas and and things that they want to do and we want to make sure we protect that, so.
And it's just odd that we've been seeing like development proposals out there for the first time really ever. Yeah. The past few months.
It's felt like, like we have between the residential rezonings and commercial zonings that that that. We are moving towards a. A much more.
Kind of a corridor.
Yeah. And I hope that we don't do to the. Airport what the growth plan is trying to keep from happening to the city.
Yeah.
Uh, so it's kind of two, one's part is we're already developed out there. It's a good place to to do more commercial. Just maybe commercial and residential activity. But yeah, it absolutely shouldn't constrain them, but should be compatible. Interesting. Um, okay, other updates, questions?
I have a quick question about the IGA. It doesn't have to go through us, but. Can we, can we look at the, at it at some point?
Yeah, when I, um. Yeah, certainly. I mean, you'll have. Same opportunity as the public.
So it goes through a public notice?
No, it does not as a contract. It would essentially be whenever the the packet is released. Um, for the commissioners meeting, which is.
How far in advance? Does that get posted? Agenda, like the final agenda with the materials?
Yeah, it's not much. Yeah, yeah, I think it's posted on Friday. Yeah, so we we turn our stuff in on. Monday and then it's posted on Friday and then the next Tuesday have their meeting. So. I mean, is there any danger or any problems if I send it to them before we get it on the agenda? I mean, once we've come up with what we we've looked at and everybody's looked at, I mean, is there, is there a problem with that?
Not necessarily.
I mean, and if you guys have comments, you could funnel them to to me and I can pass them on when we take the contract forward to.
I mean, if if you felt there was some value to to folks like ourselves, perhaps anticipating a problem that. Might have escaped your attention, but. You you guys are the pros, but uh, it's all going to come back to us to approve. The overlays and all of the follow on work is going to come through the P and Z, so it wouldn't be inappropriate to to have. Uh, little heads up and just so we can be thinking about it.
Right.
Help it.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
And to really frame what the IGA in my mind is, it's just kind of the framework of. What we're agreeing to do and then really when we get into the weeds, that's that's going to be what we come up with with our overlay zone. That's really where the rubber meets the road. I mean, there's going to be some general things that the city wants, like. You know, that we're going to dedicate. Everything in the in the the APOZ or or in, wrong one, the other zone, um, will will be. Uh, you know, we'll dedicate right away instead of just doing easements or whatever. I mean, there's just like a few things and. That we're really looking at it. It's not going to be like this huge massive document that's very specific. It. It really will be like, you know, we'll, we'll develop these standards through this and we'll do this and it'll be through the the, you know. The regulations every right and, you know, if we do decide to change the regulations or this, or maybe there's this process in it. Um, so I'm not seeing it being like this huge. Huge deal, but but I haven't seen what they've done lately, so.
And still creating legal enforcement duties.
Right.
Well, what what caught my attention, I I had previously understood that. The IGA was kind of neither here nor there. The county has to zone to. To uh, effectuate those portions of the of the plan that we. That we were embracing, but I, I guess if I understood correctly, it would open my eyes here in the last month's discussions is that. What is the critical thing about the IGA is that. The city will commit to bringing central water sewer out. If we zone something, it says you have to have it. I mean, so that's, that's not a.
Possibly.
General directions, let's find a framework for making decisions. We will, we need something quite concrete from the city. So you you darn right.
Yeah, that that's our big thing in the agreement. Um, and that's what we've been fighting for and. That's, that's the big thing that we want to review once we get the the ID back from the the city to make sure that still is. Works for us, so.
Yeah, that this seems like that's really the only tool that we have. It's the major tool we would.
Yeah.
Get what the the kinds of zoning restrictions that we need.
I mean, without that, it's not really an agreement. So there's not any give and take.
Yeah, right.
You do this, you get that.
So we don't say you, you need the central water and the city says it's not happening.
Right, so.
I just have one more, one more thing, a theoretical thing, but every now and then I read articles about. These Bitcoin. Bitcoin places that. Have to use a lot of electricity to manage the data and. And it's turned out to be pretty harmful. For the areas that they get located. Right now, we wouldn't be able to prohibit those, would we? Thought about them a little bit.
So I mean, to the, to the extent that that. Sort of touches over on to like the electrical utility side. We cannot touch that at all. Um, because that's public service commission and it involves all the electrical provider. I imagine the carbon power electric would not be terribly pleased about someone like overloading their grid. In, yeah, rural Albany County.
Yeah, honestly, if it was zoned commercial property and somebody came and wanted to do that. You can just do that.
I mean, oftentimes it's just like in someone's garage or basement too, those like mining operations.
Well, yeah, if if it's not, if it's, if it's a small scale, something like that, yeah, but. But if they're coming in and doing like a whole like warehouse of, yeah, because I I've heard of those.
Like it's a full facility, massive servers.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like they're really noisy.
Yeah.
Just from the fans?
I haven't heard that, but.
I guess I I don't know, but every time I read an article about them, it's just struck me like. These sound horrible and we probably can't do anything to prohibit them right now.
And honestly, our climate is attractive to anything that has to do with servers and computers because they don't have to.
Air conditioning.
Yeah, our condition is much, yeah, because lower temperatures, but.
Okay.
We can look at that with the land use table.
Yeah, I don't know, I can't, all these things are just sucking up the power, it's kind of crazy.
But as we're subdividing our commercial zoning, maybe that's an opportunity to to look at some of those issues.
Sure.
If there's some. I don't know, is that is that a land use?
Absolutely.
I would think.
Those are beginning structures.
Yeah, do we have noise regs? Do you, right?
Yeah, nuisance, general nuisance.
Uh, we have nuisance and there's noise regulations attached to the WEX permit, but that's nothing else.
Noise is definitely a nuisance.
Yes, so there's not any like specific standards when it comes to that, I guess.
City has has decimal standards.
Yeah. Problem with some of that stuff is like takes some equipment or someone to know how to do that stuff. Becomes really expensive to enforce and.
Uh, for the sound regulations, the uh like. Brightness measure, it's like hundred and fifty bucks.
We've got one in our office.
Yeah, see, we're already there.
I think it's only fifty bucks, so so I wonder how well it works.
Noise apps on your toe, on your smartphone.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, and I've.
Are they accurate? If you can download it to, yeah, let's get a county, we need to get county.
Yeah.
Phone for my. Office and, yeah, I'm throwing on the phone.
Sounds like we've segued into Commissioner comments. Other Commissioner comments?
I've got a question for David.
Oh, I'm sorry, good.
Uh, it's been a while, you don't have to stand up, but uh since we passed the ATU regulations and have you had?
You know.
Actual applications?
Um, yes.
About how many?
That I don't know, at least a handful. So.
So people recognize and take advantage of it.
Hmm, alright, and those that are out of compliance with something else, they've used them too, so. Oh, yeah, we have used the, they have been. Used, so.
Good. Commissioner and David was unable to come to our meeting because of a class conflict. I asked her if that was something that was going to be.
Ongoing.
Ongoing, and she wasn't sure, but just as a general comment, uh, we are not locked into this schedule, so if at any point. Uh, we feel it is it is inconvenient to. And that would include. You gentlemen as well, uh, if there is a. Strong reason to meet at a different time and date, uh, it's all up for grabs, so.
Okay.
And I I didn't promise her anything, but I I think we would all agree that if we need to move a little bit to accommodate one another, I'm I'm certainly happy to do that. Are you? Paid employees unhappy with your assignment here, would you prefer featuring business hours, any strong thoughts on it?
I mean, I'd always prefer be during business hour, but um ultimately, I mean, uh, we are getting paid to be here. Whereas you are not, so.
Yeah, I mean, I like I like the arrangement, I like it where it's not. Um, super late, you know, that's that's the biggest thing, you know, it's not. Because then we can have a long meeting and it's, you know, still get home.
You're you're remembering those meetings used to go to midnight, yeah.
Yeah, so but, yeah, for paid employees, we'll be here whenever we want to, so.
Alright, but just just to remind us all that we can we can adjust. Uh, okay, other comments, thoughts, we go to the realm. Uh, next regular meeting is scheduled for October ninth at five o'clock here. And. Seeing no objections, we are adjourned, thank you.
This time, seven o'clock.
Is this possible? Do you want to instruct us in yoga exercises or something?